Thank you everyone to tonight's School Board Candidates Forum for the upcoming municipal election scheduled on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. My name is Mike Frazier and I will be serving as the moderator for this event. Although this event is being hosted at City Hall and pertains to the election of the Rochester School Board, I would like to note that neither the city nor the school board are hosting this event. Instead, tonight's forum is being hosted by Rochester Listens, which is an affiliate of New Hampshire Listens. New Hampshire Listens is a civic engagement initiative of the Carcy School of Public Policy at the University of New Hampshire, whose mission is to help New Hampshire residents talk and work together to create communities that work for everyone. Rochester Listens is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of Rochester Listens. We believe the success of our city and our schools depends on the values, knowledge, and commitment of our elected officials. Thus, it is essential for the public to understand the views, opinions, and commitments of people running for elected office. It is this understanding that better equips voters with information to make informed voting decisions. The City of Rochester has determined this third-party event and broadcast meets the policy requirement of Policy and Procedure Memo #5.007, and has been determined to be of benefit to the Rochester community. On that note, I would like to thank the Rochester Government Channel for taping and broadcasting this forum, along with the City of Rochester for use of the council chambers. Lastly, I would like to thank the volunteers of Rochester Listens, Stacy Perslow, who in addition to hosting many Rochester Listens events throughout our community, was an integral part of scheduling and coordinating this event, and will be serving as timekeeper for this evening's forum. Also, Amy Malone, for communications, planning, and event support. The format for tonight's forum will be as follows. We will break the evening into two sessions. In session number one, we will be inviting candidates from wards one, two, and three to participate. In session number two, candidates from wards four, five, six, and those running for the at-large seat will be invited to participate. Each session is expected to last one hour with a small break in between sessions as we transition. We appreciate the candidates and the audience for taking the time to be with us tonight. With the audience joining us tonight, we ask that you please place your cellphones on silent. Please remain as quiet as possible so everyone can hear. Please hold your applause until the forum has ended so the candidates will have as much time to respond to questions as possible. We also ask that members of the audience refrain from recording or taking pictures during the event. Per compliance with the city chambers, we would like to remind everyone that the audience side of the room capacity is set at 36, and for safety reasons, capacity limits will be enforced. Tables or displays are not allowed in the hallway. The doorway to the council chambers cannot be blocked by standing members of the audience. And there needs to remain a six-foot open path egress to both the side exit of the city hall and the front doors facing Wakefield Street. We are also discouraging candidates and supporters from holding signs, handing out election material, and the like during the event. In addition to finding the full unedited recording of this forum on the Rochester Government Channel's website, we will also be posting clips from the event on the Life in the Lilac City.org website, as well as the Rochester Listens and the Life in the Lilac City Facebook pages. For the candidates joining us, the questions have already been prepared, and in the interest of time, we're not taking any questions live. Questions for this event were submitted by members of our community, including students, teachers, and families. Some of the questions submitted may have been edited to consolidate questions of a similar topic for clarity and/or brevity. We are timing responses. When time is up, I will move on to the next candidate. Should you be able to see the timer, or you should be able to see the timer on the screens, so please stay within the time limit. Please refrain from personal attacks or the endorsement of other candidates during your responses. This forum is not formatted as a debate, so please do not ask to respond to other candidates' answers. Remarks by the candidates are for the purpose of discussing their positions on school issues only. Candidates running in uncontested seats are also welcome to respond to the questions. In addition to hearing questions read by myself, we have invited Spalding High School students to ask questions during each session. Questions will either require a timed response, or in the case of a closed-ended question, a one-word response. I will indicate what type of response we are looking for before a response is asked. Lastly, candidates, we realize there is a finite amount of time to answer these questions, and some questions are only one-word responses, and not all questions will be asked during both sessions. That is why at the conclusion of this evening's event, you will be receiving information on how you can respond to every question that was asked this evening in more detail, and we will share your responses using the Rochester Listens and Life in the Lilac City platforms. At this point, we are going to begin. Starting with introductions, candidates, here's your time for introductions. You will have 45 seconds each. Please start by stating your name, ward, and seat you are seeking election for. We will begin with Sarah Harrington, and then go around the room clockwise. Sarah.
Good evening. Sarah Harrington, Ward 1, Seat A. I'd like to thank Rochester Listens for hosting the School Board Forum. My background, I have a Bachelor of Science in Math Secondary Education and a Master of Secondary Education. I began my teaching career right here at Rochester Middle School for six years, and I got to know the staff and our wonderful community and students. I moved to Rochester in 2011 and have been here since, and I am finishing my third term and looking forward to seeking a fourth term at reelection.
Thank you, Sarah. Nick Bellows.
Thanks, Mike, and thanks to Rochester Listens for hosting us and my family for allowing me to disappear every weekend for the last month. My name is Nick Bellows. I grew up in Rochester. I've lived here almost my whole life, Spalding High School grad. I've been teaching for almost 20 years. I'm currently teaching at Oyster River Middle School in Durham. And I have two children who attend schools here in Rochester, as well as a wife that teaches here in town. I want my kids to have the best education that they can have. I want all of the kids in the world, really, to get great educations. And I love this city, and I think what's best for this city is that we have great schools, and that's why I'm running for school board. And that's why I'm asking for you to come and vote for me on November 7th at the East Rochester School.
Thank you so much, Nick. Diane Lavelle.
Hi, I'm Diane Lavelle. I'm a transplant from Portsmouth up here in Rochester. I moved here nine years ago after my husband passed away. I have a nine-year-old grandson who lives with me, and he attends Rochester School District. And after some situations that happened last year, I really felt the need that I need to be here and try to make the Rochester School District better for him, especially with him having special needs. So that's what my main objective is, is with our special needs kids.
Thank you so much. Sandy Kings.
Thank you. I'm a Rochester native. I went to Spalding High School and graduated from there, and went on to UNH and graduated from there with a degree in government. I spent 30 years on the city council, and I decided that it was time to get out of politics. And then I started reading the newspapers and finding out how terrible math scores and reading scores were, and decided maybe I better get back into politics at the school board level. And I'm really disappointed because I know New Hampshire ranked fourth for a number of years across the state, and I don't know where we are now, but I suspect it's below that. And I don't think we can blame it all on the pandemic.
Thank you, Sandy. David Camery.
Thank you, Mike. My name's David Camery. I'm running for Ward 2, Seat A. I've been a Rochester resident for 20 years. I've married with two children who've both graduated through Spalding and have come up through Rochester schools. Both, one has graduated college and the other's currently in college. I think they were well-treated and well-learned in the Rochester school system. I believe that we can provide a quality education, but it takes sensible leadership and sensible decisions to be made to provide quality education. Parent involvement, in my opinion, is very key. Thank you.
Thank you so much, David. Shawnee McGowan.
Hi, my name is Shawnee McGowan. I'm running in Ward 3, Seat A. I was previously a Rochester Middle School teacher for six years. I just stopped this past year to be a stay-at-home mom to my one-year-old, so I'm very familiar with what is going on in the school community right now. I have my master's from the Carcy School of Public Policy at UNH. In public policy and analytics, I did a dual master's. I focused within education policy and did my internships with some nonprofit that focused on education in New Hampshire. And I did a lot of studying with education funding, so I am very familiar with the education world in New Hampshire.
Thank you so much, Shawnee. Christine Giannotti.
Thank you. Hi, thank you for having us tonight and hosting this. I've been married for 32 years. We've lived in Rochester for the last 23. All of my kids have grown up through the Rochester school system. I have a son that graduated, and twin girls that are seniors. So I've been in the school system for quite some time, in and out of all the buildings, met all the meetings with the teachers, in the sports arena for my kids involved in different sports. So I am very familiar with things that go on in the schools. I was concerned previous to this with the Common Core. I believe that it has not really helped our children. I think there are a lot of different decisions that could be made as far as the education and getting back to basics and allowing the teachers to actually do what they were hired to do.
Thank you, Christine. Matt Pappas.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you Rochester Listens. My name is Matt Pappas. I've lived in Ward 3 in Rochester now for 22 years. My kids attended Gonnick School and went all the way up through high school. My oldest is now a junior at the University of Rhode Island, and my youngest is currently a senior. My involvement in the school started at Gonnick School. When my oldest was in kindergarten, my efforts started to head up the renovation of the playground at Gonnick School. Over seven years, $130,000 later, the school has a brand-new playground that is very stellar. Over the years, my involvement in the high school, in the band, and drama program, and I think that's a very key point. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Matt. And thank you, everyone, for those introductions. We will now go into the questions. For question number one, we want to know even more about your background, so that is why we are asking, what is the greatest skill you bring to this position, and how will you use it to support the district's success? For this question, we will begin with Ward 1, Seat B candidate Nick Bellows, followed by a response from Ward 1, Seat B candidate Diane Lavelle, and continue around clockwise until all candidates have had an opportunity to respond, ending with Sarah. So we'll start with Nick. Oh, I'm sorry. You will have 60 seconds to provide a response.
Thanks, Mike. I'm a learner. I've been a learner my whole life. I've never been a school board member, so I know that there will be a lot that I'll need to learn about that role. But I have been around schools almost my entire life, so I know I'm not coming into this blind. Over the last few years, I've been working really hard to learn to become a better listener as well. If you want to work with other people, the first thing that you need to do is understand where they're coming from before you can expect them to understand where you're coming from. And I think in a role like this, where you're going to need to work with, you know, 12 other board members, and 13 city councilors, and 35,000 people that live in the city, you need to be able to listen and learn from other people so that you can fulfill the role properly. So I love learning. It's a passion of mine. It's one of the reasons I love my job, because I get to help other people learn as well. And I also love to listen.
Thank you so much, Nick. Diane Lavelle.
Yes. As the mother of three children and the grandmother of four or five, I can't remember now, I have also had experience with schools. I was a parent advisor at the schools my children attended out in California and in Washington State. I believe our children are our future. And I've always worked with our young people through scouting, teaching Sunday School, any activities that I can with my kids, with their friends. And I've encouraged them to be able to talk to me, to come to me. And they still do. And even young people that I work with can come with me, come to me, and speak to me, and tell me what's going on. I just see, as I spoke earlier about the special ed, and I just want to help there.
It's tough with the timer, I know.
Yeah, I know. That's all right.
Thank you, Diane. So Sandy Kings.
Thank you. I guess my skills would be that I am a government major from the university, graduate from the University of New Hampshire, and I've spent a lifetime in politics. I understand, and I've said over 30 years on the city council, so I understand how the interaction of the school board and the council works, sometimes better than others. And I think that we should be able to make that a better system between the two. We shouldn't be reading in the newspaper about the squabbles that are back and forth. I think there's not enough information and there's not enough transparency going on. So I think that we all ought to know more about both, but particularly the school board. I think there's a lot of information there that people don't know what's going on in the schools. It's very difficult to find out what is, and I think I can bring some openness to that.
Thank you very much, Sandy. David Camery.
Thank you. What do I bring to the board? I'm reasonable. I like to think I'm reasonable. I'm a retired firefighter. I understand unions. I was a union member for 20-plus years. I'm a reasonable person. I don't necessarily pick a side. I listen to all arguments or all discussions and try and find the reasonable, best-fitting argument. Sort of what Nick had said, you know, you have to listen. The school board should be apolitical. It should be functioning in the best interest of the students, the teachers, the administration, all combined, because the future of our schools is the future of our city. Economic growth stems directly into the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Shawnee McGowan.
Yes. So I would say my greatest skill is that I tend to work well with all types of people. I will listen to everybody on any issue, and I like to hear both sides. When I was in my under, or sorry, my master's program, we had a professor that would make us take different positions for different issues, to really get us to learn how to hear both sides. So I feel like kind of compromising and figuring out what the best solution is to a problem, doing it without involving as much politics, and just really thinking about what's best for the students and staff of the district would be my greatest skill.
Thank you, Shawnee. Christine Giannotti.
Thank you. I guess my greatest, so I have three that I had thought about. I think that being a good listener, as well as not just listening, but hearing. I'm a reasonable person, and I'm also a people person. I enjoy working with all different groups of people. I feel like working together for the success of our kids is what is mostly important here, that all groups, all separate entities, need to work together rather than maybe working against each other to make sure that our kids have a successful future, because after all, I mean, that's why we're here, for the sake of our children. So I just look forward to being able to work in that aspect of things.
Thank you, Christine. Matt Pappas.
Thank you. I would say certainly start off with the fact that I've been a teacher now for 25 years. I'm in my 26th year in the Oyster River Schools. So that position allows me to have some connections with Rochester teachers as well, Rochester School District. I think the greatest skill is building relationships. When I was the board vice chair for two terms, one of the things that we focused on was working with the city council to stop layoffs. Budget cuts over the past previous few years had laid off over 30 positions in the district, and those relationships with the city council and the mayor allowed us to stop that hemorrhage of positions. I would also say that my involvement in the schools has also been very key. Meeting new people constantly wherever I go, helping out kids at all levels, whether it's with various bands, whether it's with the PTAs in the various schools, and then drama program, and anything I can do to help kids and be involved certainly is going to make the district a lot better.
Thank you, Matt. Sarah Harrington.
Thank you. As I mentioned, I began my teaching career teaching mathematics at Rochester Middle School. Since then, I've been teaching eighth-grade math on the seacoast, and my passion is teaching and learning and doing what's best for kids. When I left Rochester, I knew I wasn't done. I wanted to give back. I wanted to be involved in the school community, which is why I served on the school board. And the things I bring, I am analytical, I'm a problem solver, I have the ability to make decisions, but it's certainly after communicating, listening, hearing both sides. And my involvement on a condo board for several years, serving on that, I worked a lot with budgets and reserve funding, and I carry that with me to the school board. Being fiscally conservative is important to me, and going through the budget every year, and I want to continue doing those things.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you all for your responses. Moving on to question number two, this will come from one of our Spalding High School students. While they are getting ready, I will provide a setup for this question. "A recent study conducted by Reaching Higher New Hampshire surveyed nearly 600 teachers, paraprofessionals, and administrators about their jobs, and what factors might prompt them to leave. Nearly four out of 10 responded that the climate of a school was a concern. About one-third cited a perceived lack of administrative support, and over one-fourth of respondents pointed to a low pay, with 100% of paraeducators referencing low salary as the top reason for leaving." Ty, if you are ready, please introduce yourself and ask your question.
Good evening. My name is Ty Wyman. I am a senior at Spalding High School and co-captain of the Spalding Debate Team. My question is this: High-quality teachers and staff are instrumental in fostering young students' educational experiences. However, due to low pay, many teachers stay at Rochester for short periods of time before moving on to higher-paying districts nearby. What strategies do you have for recruiting and retaining high-quality teachers and staff?
Thank you, Ty. And for this question, we will begin with Ward 1, Seat B candidate Diane Lavelle, followed by a response from Ward 2, Seat A candidate Sandy Kings, and then, as we have done, go clockwise around the room until all candidates have had a chance to respond. You will have 60 seconds to respond to this question. Sorry, Diane.
No, no problem. Thank you for your question. One of the things that I feel is difficult for the teachers is that communication between the school and the home life, whether it be that the parents are able to be a more active part in their child's education, or even if something's going on in the school, can the school go to the parent? And it also works for the school, the teachers with the district. Are they able to go to the district, to the superintendent, to those who are in special ed and whatever? Are they able to go and communicate to them the issues that might be going on in the classroom that they may need some support with? I think that lack of support from those in supervision is lacking.
Thank you, Diane. Sandy Kings.
Okay. I actually think that, we have just passed two new contracts, one for paraprofessionals and one for teachers, so we're not the highest in the area, but we certainly are more competitive, and that will stop some of the flow, I think, because it's obvious if you only have to drive five miles, or eight miles, or 10 miles, and you can get a $5,000 raise, you're going to do that. So we hope we've stemmed that. But the other thing is, education today is sort of, we think it's like, we trade we think it's like, we treat them like, not teachers, but we treat the systems like factories. Go in and where every child is coming in at five, and we're hoping they go out at 18 and pass the SATs with 1,300s and stuff like that. And it's not necessarily so. They're little, unique individuals. And we need to get back to that in our schools now.
Thank you, Sandy. David Camiri.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. I think we, to keep, first off, we have high-quality staff. I believe at all levels, a very general statement. And I think to retain the staff that we have, we have to, A, listen to the concerns that they have and address the concerns. Again, if it's pay, we have past contracts. We are competitive. We are definitely not the highest. We're definitely not the lowest. As far as pays, we do currently have an initiative with UNH, with the intern programs, with intern teachers coming in. And we're hoping, in collaboration with that program, to recruit, with the exposure that those interns get, recruit them to sign on as full-time teachers upon graduations.
Thank you, David. Shawnee McGowan.
So yes, we do need to pay teachers more. But there are other things we can do because that can only be negotiated during contracts. We can start by improving our reputation within the district, word-of-mouth spreads. So if teachers are talking about issues within the district, other teachers aren't going to want to come here. We can be more communicative to parents and to staff about things going on. And most importantly, I think, listening to the teachers and their needs of what they need within the classroom goes a really long way. Showing appreciation to our teachers, trusting that they can do their job. They have, you know, ample professional development and certification. So they know what works and what does not work within the classroom. And then incorporating teachers within the decision-making for the district. I think that listening to their voice would be very helpful. And then we also kind of need to look at how we promote jobs and update our recruiting methods.
Thank you, Shawnee. Christine Giannotti.
Thanks. Well, I feel like in recruiting and retaining our staff, I think that we need to have an attractive atmosphere for them to want to stay in. Peaceful is usually better than not. I also think that transparency with the superintendent's office and decisions that are being made and handed down would be something that they would feel supported through. With listening and hearing what they're saying, they would feel more, the teachers would feel support from the district if they were heard. And sometimes teachers don't feel like they are heard. They just kind of feel like they're here to fill a position and not really here to do what they have gone to school and been trained to do. And I feel like if we can get back to basics and let them teach and work with the kids directly, I think things may be a little more attractive for them to stay.
Thank you, Christine. Matt Pappas.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Ty, for that question. It's probably going to be one of the most important questions asked tonight. I think the leadership and setting morale starts at the top. I think if the superintendent and administrators set the tone for a supportive system in our schools, the trickle-down will come. And I think the support that teachers need, they need to know that the administrators have their back when dealing with some controversial issues or with parents and what have you. I think that when you look at it, 50% of all teachers across the country leave the profession after five years. That's something that we have to stop. And it starts right here locally. I think that in the local level, I think we need to work with the unions, whether it's setting up focus groups with various teachers and find out what the needs are, what would they like to see? And see if we can improve some of the benefits and make the district more attractive.
Thank you, Matt. Sarah Harrington.
Thank you. So I believe it really does start with culture and climate. And it's a community effort. It really does start at the top, starting with the school board, making us work together, be on a united front, show administration that we are supporting them. And then it trickles down from there. I also feel like we are trying to address some of those concerns by supporting staff, by adding 18 new positions this year, with math interventionists, reading interventionists, school psychologists, social workers, and guidance counselors, to try to take some of that load off of the teachers. Because it's not easy. They have a lot, a lot on their hands. So trying to show the support and then continuing to work with the RFT to address that, those years that teachers tend to leave, trying to change that for their salaries.
Thank you, Sarah. Nick Bellows.
Thanks, Ty. I echo what Matt said. This is, I think, the most important question that the district is facing right now. It's not unique to Rochester or even our field. But if we can't keep good people in our buildings, we can't do good for our kids. You know, we've had a day of reckoning in public education for a long time. We've been grossly underpaying paraeducators for years. And they are the lifeblood of our schools. People don't realize what they do. They keep the schools flowing. And you can make more working in retail, not that there's anything wrong with that, but you can make more working in retail than you can working in a school. The kids are our future. We've got to pay people to work with them. I think the pandemic showed us a few things, is that people will work great jobs for less pay. And they'll work crummy jobs for great pay. But they won't work a tough, crummy job for crummy pay. And that's where we're at right now. So it's not all about compensation. We want to make our places great places to work. We can start there, but we've got to think about how we're paying people.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you all for your responses. And thank you again to Spalding High School student, Ty Wyman, for asking your question. Question number three will be a closed-ended, one-word response question. As a reminder to the audience and those listening at home, candidates will have the opportunity to expand upon these responses to these questions. And we will post those on lifeintheilexcity.org. The topic is charter schools. Publicly funded but privately run charter schools have been rising in popularity throughout the country, with the New Hampshire Department of Education citing a 14% increase in enrollment in New Hampshire in 2022. Advocates for charter schools will cite more control over curriculum and community involvement as positives, while those not in favor of charter schools cite a lack of diversity and funding issues as reasons not to consider charter schools. So the question is, do you believe charter schools should play a role in the future of the Rochester School District? And again, as this is a close-ended question, we're only looking for a yes, no response, or you could say undecided. And we'll start off with Ward 2 CA candidate, Sandy Keens, followed by a response from David Camiri, going around the room clockwise until all candidates have had a chance to respond. Sandy Keens.
I think you need to be specific. There are private charter schools and public charter schools.
Publicly funded.
Oh, well, they all get publicly funded right now. And my answer would be no.
Okay, thank you. David Camiri.
I believe at this time, no.
Thank you. Shawnee McGowan.
Undecided.
Thank you, Shawnee. Christine Giannotti.
Undecided.
Thank you. Matt Pappas.
I would lean towards no.
Thank you. Sarah Harrington.
I would lean towards no.
Thank you. Nick Bellows.
See it upon it. There's a lot more to this question than yes or no. So right now, I'd say no.
Okay, thank you. And Diane Lavelle.
I'm going to say undecided.
Okay, thank you. Question number four is on the topic of transparency. So we hear this word coming up a lot during election seasons. Some of you running for school board are using this as a reason to vote for you this November. We've even heard it a few times this evening. So the question is, what does transparency mean to you? And how would you, as a school board member, be more transparent in decision-making and access to information? For this question, we will begin with Ward 2 CP candidate, David Camiri, followed by a response from Ward 3 CA candidate, Shawnee McGowan, going clockwise until all candidates have had an opportunity to respond. This will be 60 seconds to provide a response. David Camiri.
Thank you. Transparency to me means that the voices are heard and the decisions being made are open and public. There are times that, dealing with personnel, that there needs to be non-public sessions and whatnot. I think access to our meetings currently, school board meetings, committee meetings, whatnot, very few, very few public shows up to our committee meetings. Very few show up. There's select few that repeatedly show up to our full board meetings. A lot of work gets done at the committee level and being aired on cable channel 26. And all our meetings are recorded. I think the information is available. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Shawnee McGowan.
Thank you. So to me, transparency means open communication to the parents, to the staff, to the students, to the community as a whole. When decisions are being made, everyone within the community should know. I think if there's something that happens within a particular school, the parents of that school should know, like, right away, as soon as possible. And then it should follow up within the community. Because a parent at McLoughlin might text a parent at Chamberlain, and then, you know, word-of-mouth spreads. So I think more open communication within the district to all parties, like David mentioned, access to committee meetings, kind of restructuring, maybe trying to figure out how to get more people involved with all the school board meetings. And open communication with the administration and teachers would also be important to me.
Thank you, Shawnee. Christine Giannotti.
Thanks. It sounds like we may all sound a little echoey on this question, but transparency, not only, I don't think that only means coming from the top. I think that means involving the parents, involving the teachers, the school board, the superintendent's office. That there needs to be a collaborative effort between all groups in decision-making. Things don't have to seem so secretive or like there's a reason they don't want, anyone wants things getting out. I feel like sometimes parents feel like they're left in the dark, and then teachers feel like they're left in the dark. But if everybody's working together to make the decisions and to make the changes, then I believe it'd be a much better district to be involved in.
Thank you, Christine. Matt Pappas.
Thank you. Transparency needs to be information disseminated throughout, where there's nothing to hide, nothing in the shadows, so to speak. This seems to be the latest buzzword, especially with their new school being built. A lot of the community that came out to question the school was from the neighboring neighborhoods. But every one of our meetings were in the open. We had numerous forms where people could come in and ask questions, get answers. So decisions were made in public. Decisions, information that we had was made to the public and is open to anyone to take a look. I think that information coming from the top certainly needs to be disseminated a little bit better. And there's always room for improvement with transparency.
Thank you, Matt. Sarah Harrington.
Thank you. So transparency to me is just providing information, having it accessible. All of our meetings are recorded and posted on our website along with our meeting minutes. We have public comment at every committee meeting and full board meeting to welcome the public to address the committee or the board. We also host community retreats. Unfortunately, it wasn't well-attended, the last one we had. But we did put a survey out to the public as well to get feedback for the Rochester School Department, which is what we also geared our five-year strategic planning on, using that information. And phone and email, I'm always accessible. And I have constituents call me and reach out to me to discuss any issues they have. And just making sure that they're going to the source to get the information that they're looking for. It's a two-way street.
Thank you, Sarah. Nick Bellows.
I feel like, you know, our board acts in a fairly transparent way. But you want to be proactive about it. And in the age of social media, if there's mystery around an issue, someone's going to fill that void and make up their own story about why decisions are being made. So being proactive and getting the message out there as a board member, being accessible and trying to be accountable for your decisions is important. But all organizations struggle with communicating effectively. It's a challenge. Taking it back a little bit, though, in terms of transparency, it also has to do with how decisions are made within buildings. So for example, if you're a fifth grader at Chamberlain Street School right now, you've had six principals during your time there. And there's never been a committee where staff get to be involved in choosing who's going to be their leader. So what's transparent about that? How is those decisions made? And that affects staff morale. That affects staff retention.
Thank you, Nick. Diane Lavelle.
Open communication is the secret to transparency. We all seem to feel the same way about that definition being the thing. It is, it's working together, talking to each other, listening to each other, hearing what each other has to say. And like you said, we have those, the social media, and everything's taped. So everything is open to those who really want to know what's going on. I think sometimes people like to be hand-fed that information instead of looking for it themselves. So then they feel like, oh, well, you're not being transparent. So, you know, maybe, you know, we have to make sure that, you know, if you need to know that information, come to somebody, we'll let you know. You know, we don't have the time to hand-feed you, though.
Thank you, Diane. Sandy Keens.
Thank you. Transparency is the reason that I ran two years ago, because I didn't feel I was getting enough information about what the school was doing and when it was doing it. The new school being built is a prime example. Since all the decisions have been made about where the land is, what we're paid for, and not really transportation or anything, but the lay of the land, how much of it is underwater, are now public hearings. But there weren't public hearings beforehand. And I think that was a mistake. I think people would have brought forward complaints about the traffic on Salmon Falls Road if they had known about these meetings being on over there. The other thing is, we need to get a live feed of our meetings onto the cable vision, like the city council is. They are not, they're broadcast two or three weeks later, so.
Thank you, Sandy, and thank you all for your responses. For question number five, we return to a question asked by one of our Spalding High School students. Gavin, if you're ready, please introduce yourself and ask your question.
Hello. I am Gavin Boudreau, a member of the debate team at Spalding High School here in Rochester. Many students, families, and staff often feel that their concerns are not often heard by the superintendent or school board. How do you intend to hold the superintendent accountable for all programs, families, and students and staff? Please address how you will push back when needed to advocate for our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin. For this question, we will begin with Ward 3 CA candidate, candidate Shawnee McCowen and then followed by Christine Giannotti and going around the room clockwise. In 60 seconds. Thank you.
Shawnee. Thank you for your question, Gavin. That is a great question. So I think this question also goes back to transparency. We need to be transparent as a school board with the superintendent, any superintendent that we have. I know that right now, there's a lot of pushback and I think if the community kind of knew some of the things happening with the school board and the superintendent, you know, maybe it wouldn't be as big of a deal. But definitely, open lines of communication would be beneficial for any issues we have. I would address pushback simply by advocating. Like I've always been my students' biggest advocate when I was teaching and if there was something that came up that I didn't agree with, I would not be afraid to voice my opinion and what I thought was right for the situation, even if it went against what the superintendent thought.
Thank you, Shawnee. Christine Giannotti.
Thank you. I think a big part of an issue may be visibility. I, I don't know if half the people in here would even recognize the superintendent if he walked into a room. Some people may not even, have maybe never even met him and that's partly people's fault themselves. They can go introduce themselves if they'd like, but I think more visibility from him in our schools, around our kids, just walking around, seeing how everybody's doing is a big deal. Advocating for them, there's all avenues of being able to reach out to our school board and to our superintendent, email, telephone, showing up in the office if you need to, if you have questions that you feel aren't being asked or, I'm sorry, answered, just go knock on the door, make an appointment and those appointments need to be met and followed through with and then we may get some of the answers that we're looking for.
Thank you, Christine. Matt Pappas.
Thank you. Thank you, Gavin, for that great question. I think first of all, we need to understand that superintendent does have some employee rights like everybody else. So when we do evaluations as a school board, that cannot be public and that's to protect his rights under the law. We do evaluate him every year. I know that, I've been critical of all the superintendents that I've worked for, which has been too. And I've submitted my concerns, whether it's picking up the phone and calling him or whether it's emailing or directly ask him in person. Just recently, we started a 360 evaluation to ensure that the superintendent gets direct feedback from the people that work for him. And that's something that we did this year to ensure that he's listening and he's getting that information that he needs to know.
Thank you, Matt. Sarah Harrington.
Thank you. So I'm one of 13 board members and we have conversations, we welcome students to our committee meetings. Oftentimes, we arrange for staff, staff are presenting to us in committee meetings often. We do try to listen to students and staff in many opportunities. And as far as the superintendent goes, you know, we hire him to run the district and certainly we, if we hear things or have concerns, we address it with him, we ask him and get, understand both sides of the situation. And if we have concerns, we certainly do have conversation with the superintendent. But there are opportunities that we invite students and staff and also recognition, too. It's always great to recognize the staff of our district.
Thank you, Sarah. Nick Bellows.
All school districts have to have a strategic plan in place and part of that strategic plan is going to be essentially goals or deadlines that you meet each year over the course of the plan. And so in a way, that functions as an opportunity to give the person in charge of accomplishing those goals, feedback, it's like a report card in a way. You know, you're putting a lot of trust in this person. It's a tough job, but if they're not meeting those goals, then you have to ask them why. You have to, as a board, ask them what support they need from you. And if you feel like you're giving them all the support they can, they need and they're still not meeting their goals, then you, you need to consider what your options are. I think it's great to hear that we're getting that 360 feedback from the staff. That's how people are gonna grow, is by learning from their employees or their customers, however you wanna consider it, what they got to do better.
Thank you, Nick. Diane Lavelle.
Yes. I've had personal experience with our superintendent and he actually was quite responsive to our needs. But as far as visibility, like you said, I have never even met the man. I have, I don't even know if I would recognize him if I saw him. My daughter does work in one of the schools and I don't think she's even ever met him either. So he, it's a two-way street as far as some pushback. We need him to, to be visible to us so that we can be able to feel like we can be visible to him and that we'll both listen to each other. And we just have to be more persuasive when we want to go see him or talk to him, like you were saying, you know, knock on his door or make an appointment or something. He's not gonna know that we need his help unless we, as people, ask him.
Thank you, Diane. Sandy Keens.
I think the process that we used this year was a bad process. It was a, I don't know, a 10 or 15-page questionnaire and had a lot to do with his interaction with various people that we don't know or haven't, don't interact with ourselves. But I think we're changing that, we're moving forward and we're having personal discussions among the board, which I think is important because what you may have as a question or an individual, what you may have, might be completely different or they might be the same. And we can work on those together and then make that approach to the superintendent. So I think there is an opportunity for big changes there, too. And I think visibility in the community is very important for him, but, so.
Thank you, Sandy. David Camiri.
Thank you. And thank you, Gavin, for the question. So as a board of 13, we have one employee and that is the superintendent. We need to hold him accountable. As the old adage is, the buck stops with him. He's the man in charge. We trust in what he tells us. If we hear differently, then we have to do investigation or, you know, there's always two sides to the stories or whatnot. The 360 evaluation is a great tool if used properly. It's getting feedback from the day-to-day interactions that people have with the superintendent. Again, it's communication and transparency across the board.
Thank you, David. And thank you again, Gavin, for asking this question, Gavin Boudreau, asking this question. So we're gonna move on to number six, which will be a close-ended, one-word response question. The topic is book bans. I am aware that Fosters.com has recently asked you this question for their survey, which is why we'll only be looking for one-word response this evening. I encourage those in the audience and those listening at home to visit Fosters.com and view those surveys to read each candidate's more in-depth response to this question. So the question is, do you support media specialists making the decision as to which books are available in the school? Again, yes, no, or undecided. And we'll begin with Christine Giannotti and going around the room. Christine.
Thank you. I'm gonna say no. I don't.
Thank you. Matt Pappas.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Matt. Sarah Harrington.
Yes.
Thank you. Nick Bellows.
As a media specialist, absolutely yes.
Thank you, Nick. Diane Lavelle.
As a grandmother, I'm gonna say no.
Thank you, Diane. Sandy Keens.
I'm not sure what a media specialist is, but I'm not sure they should be making a decision for the whole board.
Thank you, Sandy. David Camiri.
I'm gonna say yes.
Thank you, David. Shawnee McCowen.
Yes.
Thank you. And I believe we have time for one last question for this session and we will return to one of our Spalding High School students to ask the question. While they are getting prepared, I will provide a brief setup. According to the New Hampshire Department of Education, Rochester's in the top 25% for in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension and incidents of violence, much higher than the state's averages. Ty, if you're ready, introduce yourself again and ask your question.
Thank you. I am Ty Wyman for Spalding High School and my question is this. Given the numerous unaddressed concerns of students such as sexual assault and harassment, bullying and lack of mental health counseling, how would you ensure the safety, including mental, physical and emotional, safety of all students?
Thank you, Ty. For this question, we'll begin with Ward three CP candidate Matt Pappas. 60 seconds to respond, going around the room. Matt.
Thank you. Thank you, Ty, for that great question. As someone who works in a school, certainly that these are issues that I hold near and dear to my heart because the safety of students is certainly my top priority. I think dealing with sexual harassment, that is certainly a criminal issue and that's something that definitely needs to have the police involved. If there's school administrators that aren't involving the police, then we certainly would need to know that and make that something we address. I think that the other issues, certainly the board has been responsive to some degree. I think that just as Sarah mentioned earlier today, the board has increased 18 positions in our, in our district. That includes counselors, that includes psychologists, that includes people who deal directly with students on issues just like this. So I think that, you know, the mental and physical health of students is certainly a top priority, certainly mine, and I would say that the other 12 members of the board would agree that they are as well.
Thank you, Matt. Sarah Harrington.
Thank you. Safety is the number one concern before academics can even take place. We have policies in place, the JIC policy on bullying, making sure that our principals are following that policy and teachers are reporting, students are reporting as necessary so that things can be handled immediately. The mental and emotional safety, again, those 18 positions, we're trying, we're trying to get more counselors and more psychologists in to provide that mental health resource and just guidance counselors, reaching out to the families, going over programs, counseling options for individual students. And sexual assaults, zero tolerance, that would have to go to the police to handle.
Thank you, Sarah. Nick Bellows.
Thanks again, Ty, for the question. Some of this has to do with staffing. A short-staffed school is gonna struggle to address the safety needs of its students and you see that with just behaviors that get out of hand when there isn't enough people to come in and help the teacher do their job. So staffing is part of it. Part of that staffing is making sure that you have things like counselors, mental health professionals, school resource officers and other people that specialize in these specific types of safety. I agree with what Sarah said, safety comes before learning. Kids that don't feel safe and secure aren't gonna be doing much learning. You can proactively address some of these situations with programming, programs like advisory or a program, I think it's like a branded program named Open Circle that started at the earlier ages can teach kids how to just be better classmates and community members and not be bystanders for bullying, but upstanders when that happens. And so there's other ways you can do it, too, just besides staffing.
Thank you, Nick. Diane Lavelle.
Thank you for the question, Ty. That's kind of a toughie as far as for me, I'm not in the, the school environment like everyone else's or has been here, but I do, I am concerned about the safety in the schools and I know some of the schools, I believe they do have resource officers of some sort in there, which is a good thing, but, you know, they're limited, we are limited on our staff. I am happy to hear that we have 18 new personnel within the school district to, to aid our students with mental health and emotional safety. But like you said, safety does come first. If the child comes into the school and they don't feel safe, they are not going to learn. And if the, if the staff doesn't feel safe, maybe the staff doesn't feel safe because of a student or whatever, they're not gonna be able to do their job either. So safety is a concern.
Thank you, Diane. Sandy Keens.
We've just been granted about a half a million dollars to harden our schools to, on the doors and the windows and what have you and the security cameras and things like that, that are, hopefully will cut down any kind of physical altercations that might take place. We've also extended ourselves to find mental health and emotional psychologists to, who will come to work. But, you know, they're hard, every school is looking for them and so they're hard to find and they're not, they're not readily available. So we do what we can with our staff and we have a pretty decent staff, actually, that works with this. So I feel pretty confident that the Rochester schools are in good shape in terms of the safety issues.
Thank you, Sandy. David Camiri.
Thank you. And thank you, Ty, again, for the, for the question. We are, as Sandy just pointed out, as far as the security, along with building the new school, trying to close down the modulators, which are actually part, are hardship at those two schools to have a secure campus. But on the bullying and sexual assaults and egregious offenses like those, they need to be reported and thoroughly investigated or looked at and I believe they are. Along with that, the perpetrators, if you will, or the people involved, need to be held accountable for their actions and we need to, our hands are tied in some respects, but accountability for people's actions to prevent further actions from perpetuating.
Thank you, David. Shawnee McCowen.
Thank you and thank you for the question, Ty. I think safety-wise, some of the first things we can do are just making sure that we have basic classroom security, like working door locks and secondary safety mechanisms, because not all classrooms have working door locks. And then I think we could also come up with an updated comprehensive plan for threats or potential threats and then making sure that it's followed by all the schools the same way, instead of kind of each school interpreting it differently. Something maybe we could implement would be an anonymous tip reporting line for students so that if they see something, they can say something, but they could do it anonymously without the fear of backlash or getting in trouble. Prioritizing mental health, I know we're trying to get guidance counselors and therapists and it's really hard. Guidance counselors could utilize their programs and go into classrooms and teach social, emotional learning to help with that.
Thank you, Shawnee. Christine Giannotti.
Thank you. Well, first, I think as far as the safety goes, if we could implement maybe more resource officers at each school and maybe not only with the police department who has the availability, but maybe reaching out to retired vets that could spend time in our schools, walking around, roaming the hallways, getting to know the kids, would help, I think, ensure some kids feeling more safe than they do. I believe that bullying is a, is maybe the beginning of where they're feeling some of the mental and physical and emotional safety or lack of at school. There needs to be consequences for those kids who do the bullying, maybe some sort of a community service program within the school. There are consequences to every action and, you know, say they're bullying, so, okay, now you're doing this to someone else, here's what you're gonna do. You can mop the hallways, you can clean off the whiteboards in the schools, you can go wash the windows, you can go work in the cafeteria with the lunch ladies. Something that's gonna deter them from wanting to go pick on other kids that has nothing to do with being in school.
Thank you, Christine, and thank you all candidates for your responses. I would also like to thank, again, Ty and Gavin for your questions. We will see you again in session two. At this point, we are going to end session number one. I want to thank all of you for attending and participating. I wish you all the best with your campaigns and we will be taking a break to set up for the next session, which will include candidates from wards four, five and six, as well as the at-large candidates. We'll be back in just a little bit. To tonight's School Board Candidates Forum hosted by Rochester Listens. We're listening tonight, yes. Once again, I am Mike Fraser with Rochester Listens, and I'll be serving as the moderator for session two. This session will follow the same format as the first session. As a reminder, candidates haven't been invited to expand on any of their responses from tonight's forum, and should they choose to do so, we will share their responses on the Rochester Listens and Life in the Lyellix City platforms. So an email will be going out to all candidates at 9:00 PM tonight. It'll be a Google form. Take your time filling it out, it'll be a few days before we can upload it. But we have a lot more candidates in this session, so we're going to get started right away with introductions. So again, 45 seconds for introductions. Please start by stating your name, ward, and seat you are seeking election for. We'll begin with Shane Downs, and then go around the room clockwise. We will finish with at-large candidate Colleen Yazenchuk, who is joining us via Microsoft Teams. Shane Downs, 45 seconds.
My name's Shane Downs, Ward 1, Seat A. I'm a lifelong Rochester resident, Spalding High School graduate, coached football for 10 years in Rochester. I'm a Rochester police officer. I'm the elementary school liaison with the RPD's Adopt a School program. I was this year's recipient of the Red Hays Community Ambassador Award with the Rochester Police Department. I have children in the district. I have a strong vested interest in the future of the Rochester School District. As a current board member, I show transparency, accountability, honesty in making decisions based on what is best for our students and staff. I'm excited to continue this journey to improve our schools and provide the best education for our students. With your support, we can make our vision of a transparent, accountable, honest, student-centered school system a reality.
Thank you, Shane. Ann Grassi.
Thank you, and thank you to Rochester Listens for hosting tonight's event. I'm a longtime resident of Rochester, went to school here, graduated here, have raised five children, went through the school system, have 18 grandchildren, a great many of whom are involved in the school system now. And that's partially the reason I run, is to make school a great place for kids. I remember when I was in school, and I loved it, and I want kids to have that experience. I think it's important for a good start in life. I work for Rochester Childcare Center, so I'm a developmentalist. I understand child development and what's appropriate for kids to be taught and when. That's my strength that I bring to the board. Looking for your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Paul Cormier.
My name's Paul Cormier. I'm running Ward 4, Seat B. I have three kids that went through the whole system. I've heard the good and the bad about the system, so hopefully I can change some of that. I've been rec ball, basketball coordinator for about 10 years through the rec program. Lord knows I lived at Roger Allen for many, many, many years coaching. I'm just hoping you give me your vote, because I'm not a politician, I don't have all the answers, but I'm at least willing to listen.
Thank you, Paul. Jim Connor.
Hi, my name's James Connor, Ward 4, Seat B. I have been in Rochester roughly 37 years, been married 32. Together, we raised three sons, all of them have graduated from Spalding. And there's a big difference between back then and now, and I would like to bring it to back then, where the parents can go into the school when they want to, to see their child in the classroom, not like now, they can't do it.
Thank you, Jim. Karen Stokes.
Hi, my name is Karen Stokes. I am Ward 5, Seat A. I've been on here for a little bit, I don't even know if I remember how long. I am a Rochester graduate from Spalding, so I graduated in 1989. My three kids have all gone through Rochester, along with a lot of family members. I'm really vested with special education. My son is diagnosed with autism, so making the schools aware of special education and all that entails so that they can have a fulfilling life as well as typical students. And I feel like I have a lot more to give for the board, and I think that being elected, we can work together as a team and change a lot of things that need to be changed right now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Eric White.
Hi, my name's Eric White. I'm running for Ward 5B. I have been here in Rochester since 1997, when the military relocated me here. I retired from the military after 22 years of service about seven and a half years ago now. I also worked part-time for the Rollinsford Police Department, I've been there for 23 years. I am married to an educator, my wife Kristen is a longtime educator in the city of Rochester. She's now principal at Pittsfield Elementary School. I believe that I can bring a lot to the board as far as relationship building and communication that I feel may be lacking right now, and that may be why we may have some issues moving things forward.
Thank you, Eric. Stephen Cusamano.
My name's Stephen Cusamano, I'm running for Ward 6, Seat A. I retired from active duty after 22 years of service. I was relocated to here in 2014 and decided that this was going to be my home. I have five boys. I've had one go all the way through the system and is graduating currently at Plymouth. I have three more boys currently in the system, all the way from early childhood development all the way up to the high school. I've been an active participant in almost every youth sport I can be, and I spend a lot of time down at Roger Allen and currently on the board seat down there. I believe that we need to push the kids in the right direction, and it starts with early child development, and then move them all the way through.
Thank you, Stephen. Kelly Allen.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kelly Allen, I'm running for Ward 6, Seat B. I am a longtime, born and raised in Rochester, Spalding alumni. Two of my children have graduated from Spalding, and they go to, my oldest son goes to Grenada to be a veterinarian, and my other son goes to UNH. And I do have another son that goes to School Street School. I'm an active PTO member, and I am looking forward to be a more active in our community and helping it raise up some test scores and help educators and help the students.
Thank you, Kelly. Matt Boyer.
Mike, thank you, and also Rochester Listens, thank you for doing this. My name's Matt Boyer, and I'm running for reelection for the at-large seat. I'm currently serving my third term. For the past 23 years, I've worked in the credit union industry locally, I'm a Rochester native. The biggest thing that I bring to the board is through my development within financial services, I can bring in budget oversight, leadership, communication, facilities understanding, and strategic thinking. That is the biggest thing that we have implemented over the years here in the board, and as Chair of the Five-Year Committee, we put together guideposts that help each committee keep action plans in there. So as I look forward to continuing my civic duties, where I've served at the Chamber of Commerce, Gaffney Home, Rochester Main Street, I look forward to your reelection.
Thank you, Matt. Tabitha Davis.
Good evening. My name is Tabitha Davis. I am married to my husband for the past 13 years. We have four children. Two have already graduated our district. I have one senior this year who's graduating, and then I also have a middle school. I worked in our district, so I see the flaws, and I also see the goods that have been going on in our district. I was raised here, went to school here, I've been involved with the school board for the past four or five years. I go to committee meetings, I go to board meetings, I bring up the issues that the public has. The public includes the staff in our district, the parents, and the teachers.
Thank you, Tabitha. Colleen Yazenchuk.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Fantastic. First, I want to thank Rochester Listens for advocating on my behalf to be able to do this virtually in the Chicago area currently, where I was presenting today at a dyslexia conference. So a little bit about me, I'm running for at-large. I am a 30-year resident of Rochester. My husband David and I raised our two children here. They're both graduates of Spalding High School, one went to McClellan, the other went to William Allen. In addition to that, I taught here in the Rochester School District. And in that capacity, I worked for, or taught at, rather, the Reach preschool program when it was at McClellan, and also at William Allen School. I was very proud to be a part of this district, and was proud to have my children go through this district. I went on to get my master's degree.
Sorry, I apologize, there is a little bell. Were you not able to hear the bell?
I was not, I'm so sorry.
Okay, no worries, I'll probably make an audible ding then.
Thank you.
For the, for the additional questions. But thank, thank you so much, Colleen.
Absolutely.
Okay, and thank you all for those introductions. We'll now begin with questions. For question number one, we will want to know even more about your background, so that is why we are asking, in what ways have you been involved in the district's schools and in the community at large? And for this question, we'll begin with Ward 4, Seat A candidate Ann Grassi, followed by Paul Cormier, and going around the room clockwise until every candidate has had an opportunity to respond. 60 seconds to provide your response. Ann Grassi.
Wow, 60 seconds for 30, 40 years of involvement. When my kids were young and in school, I was involved with a lot of parent groups, sports, and band, and music, and drama. I've been involved with the, I'm on the board of the Stratford County Public Health and Safety Council, and I'm on the board of the Y, the Granite State Y, Granite, Stratford County Y. And in other various organizations to do with childcare, I'm on the advisory, childcare advisory council for the state. Mostly, you can see a trend in my involvement, it's with kids, making life better for kids. And I've been involved in, in schools through PTAs and those kinds of, I always volunteer to read to kids, reading is one of my favorite activities. And I just recently read at Chamberlain School on DOT Day for September, I read in a fourth grade classroom, and I read in a first grade classroom, and I was really impressed with those first graders.
Thank you, Ann. Paul Cormier.
Well, I first started out a few years ago helping Mr. Jacobs at the rec department, refereeing basketball games, and then eventually I took over the program, and I've been running that for about 10 years, you lose track after a while. And I lived at Roger Allen basically between softball, baseball, back to softball, football. I did that for too many years. I went back the last few years to coach down at Roger Allen again, when, even though my kids weren't there, I went back for the last four or five years. I'm now coaching a 14U travel baseball team with my son. And I, that's pretty much it, I think.
All right, thank you, Paul. Jim Connor.
Well, when my boys were younger, I used to volunteer at Maple Street School for all three of them, while they all went there. What I do in the community, board member of the zoning board of adjustment, the historical district commission, I'm also the president of the Lions Club here in town, which we do a lot of volunteer work. We also, every first Thursday, we have, we host the soup kitchen at the Methodist Church downtown here. And that's pretty much it.
All right, thank you, Jim. Karen Stokes.
Sorry, I'm trying to write down all the stuff I do, because I forgot. I'm really old, so I apologize. So of course, like every parent, when your kid's a little, you do the PTA, the boosters. I was a cheer coach, shocking. I've been a team mom, I've done snack shack. I was the first female president for Roger Allen baseball, along with my co-president, who was a male, so yay for me. I think the biggest one was, I was trying to whisper to Amy Malone, but she wouldn't answer. I think it was in 2013 or 2014, my son was in middle school, and we decided that we didn't have a middle school baseball team. So with the help of a lot of people, we were able to start a middle school baseball team so that we could help the feeder program through the baseball. She's shaking her head now, which is not helpful, by the way. And that middle school baseball team is still sustainable today. Kevin Goslin is still coaching it for free of charge for the last 10 years, so shout out to him. But it's those types of things that are sustainable that make me very happy and proud.
Thank you, Karen. Eric White.
Oh, so a lot of my work has been done behind the scenes with a wife that's an administrator. We also had two girls that have gone through the Rochester School District. One's 26 now, she was a graduate of, graduate of UNH with master's degree, played hockey at UNH. She also played hockey here at Spalding as a freshman, and then moved on, went to Boston. Our younger daughter, who's 20, is a junior at UNE now, she was heavily involved in the community as well, and she is a multi-sport athlete at UNE. Our younger daughter, who's 20, is a junior at UNE now. She was heavily involved in the community as well, and she is a multi-sport athlete at UNE. So, I, as far as being involved in the community, coached youth hockey here in Rochester when the girls were younger. We've been heavily involved with Relay for Life events. Anytime there were community event, I'm sorry, school events that involved the community, we were heavily active in those as well, and I stepped in anywhere and everywhere that I could.
Thank you, Eric. Steven Cusamano.
Since I got in here in 2014, I've been actively involved in the Roger Allen, either coaching down there from the middle school to the youth program, or coaching all three at once, all the way up to the high school. I've also sat on the board of Roger Allen, and I still currently sit on the board of Roger Allen. I volunteer at the boosters at the high school. I've done that on two occasions, and then helped assist in running the Snack Shack. Haven't been around as long as everybody else, but I try to be involved as much as humanly possible.
Thank you, Steven. Kelly Allen.
I am currently an active member of the school's PTO at School Street. Years ago, I was a girl scout leader for my daughter for over 10 years. I have always chaperoned. I've always helped out for all my kids' sports, whether it was hockey, basketball. When my children played football, I was team mom. I, whatever, wherever there was a need, I would always step up and work in the cook shack and always help out wherever I could.
Thank you, Kelly. Matt Boyer.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, I was involved with the Rochester Chamber of Commerce. I still am as a volunteer, Rochester Main Street and the Gaffney Home. But one thing I was also involved with was in Manchester at the American Credit Union Museum, where I was the secretary of the Financial Literacy Program. From there, we went throughout the state and did lots of super reality programs, which taught students how to budget, looking at their future careers, and how's that going to impact them financially. With that experience, the credit union I worked with, we actually brought an in-school banking program within the tech center that is still there today. Kids actually learn about different banking products and life skills that carry forward, and actually, a lot of those graduates, there are times that I'm hiring them where I am now, because of the foundation that was built. That is because of the students, the teachers, and the entire program. And that's because of those partnerships that we have to bring together. Just like when Google's going to charge us over $10,000, I partnered a business with the school district to have those funds paid for. So, my experience is a lot with the business community and networking and bringing those relationships together.
Thank you, Matt. Tabitha Davis.
I'm sorry. I don't even think I said "at-large" on the last question, but I'm Tabitha Davis at-large. So, when the public has issues in our district, they message me or they call me, and I bring their issues to the board. Our family has volunteered at Roger Allen for many years. I also did a fundraiser for the cheer team when they were going to Florida, and we raised $1,000 for my personal business. Helped out with the football games. Even though I have no children playing football or cheering or anything like that, I do 50-50. We do the shack. We do all kinds of things. And the wrestling team. My son does play wrestling, and the district does not fund the wrestling team, so what we do is we do a lot of fundraisers, and I try to get a lot of businesses to donate for their fundraisers that they do, so that we can raise a lot of money, because we're trying to do, raise money for new mats as they need it.
Thank you, Tabitha. Colleen Yeznchak.
Thank you. Okay, so, ways that I've been involved in the district and within the schools and the community, as I was mentioning, I was a teacher in the Rochester School District. But before that, I was a substitute teacher, a parent educator. I've been a special educator in the school district, a classroom teacher, including kindergarten. When it very first came to the Rochester School District, I was amongst those who'd be the first kindergarten teachers. I have mentored new teachers in the school district. I have served on the literacy committee in the school district, as well as coming back after I'd left the district to serve in the role as a consultant and a support on a number of issues related to literacy, as well as thinking about proficiencies and what makes for a level of proficiency and what does not. And a booster parent, Little Red and Spalding Football.
That wasn't a ding.
That's okay.
I'll do ding next time.
We're waiting.
All right. And Shane Downs. Thank you, Colleen.
So, I was a football coach for 10-plus years here in Rochester, at the junior high level, right up to the high school. Seen, got to know many families, many, many kids. Now, we have one of the, one of my players now is now a Rochester police officer, so that's kind of cool seeing that aspect. For the past two years, I've been on the Adopt a School program at the PD, where right now, every, last year I was at Chamberlain Street School. Every once a week, for about an hour and a half, I'd go there and I'd do stuff with the kids, whether it's reading, recess, playing football with them, whatever the principal needed, whether it's just helping out a kid that's having a bad day. This year, I'm at Chamberlain, McCollin School, and every Friday morning, I'm there for a drop-off. So, people that drop off their kids, they'll see me there, just doing whatever I can with the kids, getting, so they see a different side of the police, because obviously, normally, they might see us on one of their bad days. I want them to see that we're good people.
Thank you, Shane, and thank you all for your responses. For question number two, we will be inviting one of our Spalding High School students to ask a question they have prepared. Ty, please come on up, and feel free to reintroduce yourself as we have a new panel of candidates.
All right. Thank you and good evening. My name is Ty Wyman. I am a senior at Spalding High School and the co-captain of the Spalding Debate Team. My question is this. Many students, families, and staff often feel that their concerns are not often heard by the superintendent or school board. How will you hold the superintendent accountable to all programs, families, and staff? Please address how you will push back when needed to advocate for students and staff.
Thank you, Ty. For this question, we will begin with Ward 4, Seat B candidate Paul Cormier, and then we'll go around clockwise until all candidates have had an opportunity to respond. 60 seconds for your response. Paul Cormier.
All right. Well, first off, my mother told me many years ago, you have two ears and one mouth, so usually, I have to listen first. And I got a big enough mouth, as some people might actually know, that I'm not afraid to hold somebody accountable if they screw up, or if I screw up, I want to be held accountable. So, if somebody's not doing what they said they were going to do, I guarantee you, I will speak up, because Lord knows, I've been told that I don't have a filter, so Lord knows, I have to work on that. But I have no problem telling people where it goes.
Thank you, Paul. Jim Connor.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Many students, families, and staff often feel that their concerns are not often heard by the superintendent or the school board. How will you hold the superintendent accountable to all programs, families, and staff? Please address how you will push back when needed to advocate for students and staff.
Okay, thank you, Ty. The main thing there, I would think, would be transparency. In order for the parents to be heard, it has to, like they said in the prior one, trickle down from the top. Okay? It's got to start with the superintendent, and he's got to learn to listen to the parents, or the educators, and the students, all three. If not, he's got to be dealt with. It's that simple. I don't have any issues telling him, like Paul said, you know, if you do wrong, you're going to know about it. But like, again, if I do wrong, I'd like to know about it, because how is change supposed to happen without people knowing?
Thank you, Jim. Karen Stokes.
Thank you. I think it's really easy to say, you know, our personnel issues, stay in personnel, and we can't really discuss those things, but as high school students that ask the question, you're at McDonald's, or you're working at your job, and you get in trouble, you know, right? You know what happens. You know that you would get held accountable. The school board's one staff member is our superintendent. We really have policies that restrict us, so the first thing that needs to change is we need to change our policies. Our policies are really restrictive on who can contact us and following a chain of command, which is really always important. But if somebody wants to contact an elected official, we want them to vote for us. We want them to be able to, you know, have interaction with us at election time, but yet, we kind of tie their hands through the rest of the two years, and we say, oh, you have to follow your chain of command. So, I think we need to be more acceptable to be able to listen to people when they're talking. We get emails from people saying that they don't want to provide their name, but yet, we don't really put any merit in that, and we need to investigate all, whether it's a name or something else.
Thank you, Karen. Eric White.
Hi, thanks for your question. I appreciate you coming tonight and asking that question. So, I think climate and culture is a huge part of it. We have to build a climate and culture where the staff, the students, the family, all feel that they can approach each other with a problem, and that that problem is going to be properly addressed. We may not always agree on the way that the issue is addressed, and because of policies with staff, things like that, you can't always share what the accountability may be. However, people need to know that there is accountability, and that when they don't necessarily do their job, they need to know that they are going to be held accountable. And students need accountability as well, and they need to know that those teachers, staff, administration, all the way up to the school board, are being held accountable. This seat is not my seat. This seat is the voters' seats. It's the constituents' seat. And they need to understand that they can speak to us and that we're going to be responsive.
Thank you, Eric. Steven Cusamano.
I kind of agree with Paul. I'm a straight shooter and always have been. I moved up in the military pretty quickly, made the senior rankings, and then I had to listen to a lot of voices. I do believe in policy. I do believe in investigating. I do believe in communication, especially in the military, it was with other chiefs, senior chiefs or master chiefs. Here, it would be with other school board members. Staying within the policy and then going from there, but I also, like I said, I agree with Paul. Once I know I'm in the policy, I've done the research, and communicated with others, I will call you out any day of the week.
Thank you, Steven. Kelly Allen.
Hi, thank you, Ty, for that question. If the policies that are in process now aren't working, I'd say they need to be fixed, and I think there needs to be follow-through. We need to listen. We need to act, and we need to work together.
Thank you, Kelly. Matt Boyer.
I think the challenge that we're running into is we're spending too much time debating it ourselves, and we're not taking the time to do what we should be, which is managing. There's a better process we should put together, and I 100% support that. We need to have the hard and really uncomfortable conversations at times in the right settings, and hold accountability where, and it really comes down to transparency. Sometimes, you know, we have to assume positive tension. Sometimes, there is a reason why. And that goes back to the students or even the faculty. When you're trying to move something forward, and you're maybe not getting the response you want, you should be able to ask why, and the problem really is if you don't feel comfortable doing so. Because if we're not giving you the why behind that, and giving you the direction to help you understand the, okay, this is why it doesn't work right now. This is how we're going to move forward, or how could we make a change? We're not given a collaborative environment, and that's what education is first, collaboration, so we can work together, make this community stronger.
Thank you, Matt. Tabitha Davis.
Very good question. Thank you, Ty. We need a new leadership is what we need. There's no transparency whatsoever right now. As somebody who's been going to the board meetings for the past four or five years, I call out every single thing that the board and the superintendent does and does not do. I will say there are three people on the board now who are fantastic and who want transparency for the students, the staff, and the parents. We do need a new policy, especially for the school board and the superintendent. If the school board is in charge of the superintendent, then we need to have new policies. It's the policies that we have now, it's just not, it's not accountable. And superintendent and the school board needs to be accountable for their actions 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Tabitha. Colleen Yeznchak.
Yes, thank you. So, one of the roles that I've had the opportunity to play, if you will, is that I was vice president of a national literacy company, and I've learned a lot of things through that role, and part of that was the idea that we cannot, unfortunately, always take things at face value. And so, we have to be willing to ask the tough questions. We have to be willing to follow up when perhaps those questions aren't being answered, or aren't being answered fully. And we have to dig deeper into understanding whatever the situation or the scenario is. So, yes, we need to do that in a collaborative environment. We need a safe culture and climate within our district that will allow for that to happen. And we can never forget that we're all here because of our students, and that's the bottom line. Thank you for the ding.
What kind of ding was that, Mike?
A little more forceful next time.
Next time. Thank you, Colleen. Shane Downs.
So, with this question, it's going to come down to our policy. Our policy handicaps the board to be able to really communicate with the public. I know I am one that voiced my concern with this, but I'm only one board member that can vote. But it keeps us from being able to communicate with the public, but I really don't care what that, I'm still going to communicate with our public, and if somebody comes to me with something, I go to the superintendent, I ask those uncomfortable questions. I really don't care. A lot of this stuff has to be done behind the scenes, because it's, when it comes down to personnel issues, it's, we can't be in public with that. But our superintendent does need to be held accountable, and right now, this current board doesn't allow that to happen. There's a select few that can have those closed-door meetings, but the whole board's not welcome to those meetings. So, that needs to change.
Thank you, Shane. Anne Grassi.
Thank you. Thank you, Ty. Good question. I have no trouble advocating for what I think our families or our students need. An example of that is, five years ago, I started to talk about kindergarten needed to go till 3 o'clock. It was very difficult for families, and we're shortchanging our fastest-learning students when we shortchange them 45 minutes a day. It took me five years of convincing other board members that we needed to have kindergarten go till 3 o'clock. It's a difference of 30 days of school over a year's time, and our scores have shown that that works. The kindergarten and first grade scores this year were off the charts. Every principal at our meeting said, these scores are amazing, and getting an extra 45 minutes a day. I knew back then that that was the right thing to do, and I did not stop. At first, the superintendent didn't want to hear about it. He tried to convince me how expensive it would be. I kept pushing.
Thank you, Anne, and thank you all for your responses. Thank you again to Spalding High School student Ty Wyman for asking your question. Question number three will be a closed-ended, one-word response question. There's a little bit of a setup here to the question. When speaking with teachers who recently left the district, they mentioned they felt a disconnect between themselves and the school board. Rightly or wrongly, there was a perception that members of the school board do not understand the day-to-day challenges of a Rochester School District employee, what they go through. While school board members cannot necessarily be employees or substitute within the district, they can do joint visits with the superintendent. If elected, will you make visiting the schools to connect with faculty and staff a priority? Yes, no, or you could respond undecided. For this, we'll start, for this question, we'll start with Ward 4, Seat B candidate Jim Connor, followed by a response from Karen Stokes, continuing clockwise. Jim?
Yes.
Thank you. Karen?
Yes.
Eric White?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Steven Cusamano.
Yes.
Thank you, Steven. Kelly Allen?
Yes.
Matt Boyer?
Yes.
Tabitha Davis?
Yes.
Colleen Yeznchak?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Shane Downs?
Yes.
Anne Grassi?
Yes, and I do now.
Thank you. Paul Cormier?
100%, yes.
Thank you. All right. Question number four is on the topic of addressing concerns parents and guardians may have about school curriculum. As a school board member, how would you respond to parents' concerns about what is being taught in or left out of classrooms? For this question, we will begin with Ward 5, Seat A, Karen Stokes, going clockwise around the room until all candidates have had an opportunity to respond. 60 seconds for your response time. Karen Stokes.
So, I think that you need to invite those parents to one of our subcommittees or our committee levels, which is instruction. I think that if parents are concerned, that's great, because we actually have a policy, I believe it's called ABA, which invites parents to come and speak. I think the major problem is we don't really get a lot of parents that come and want to be involved, but I think you need to have that open communication. So, put them on the agenda, invite them, have a dialogue. Don't have them come just to public comment, because at public comment, we're not allowed to respond back. And when you only get to hear what somebody has to say, and you don't get to ask questions or speak back, that's not really communication. So, I think you have to have that to the agenda, have them come in and speak, have board members be able to ask questions. Then, you need to do your due diligence and look. Then you need to do your due diligence and look up what they're asking for or what they feel is missing. Because I think you have to do your homework after that and decide if it's really an option and if it's one parent or multiple. And I think you have to invite your staff in as well because I think you have to include your staff when they're talking about teaching because they may not think it's in there, but it could be.
Thank you, Karen. Eric White?
I love this question. The reason for that is we have too many parents that aren't involved enough. So I love the fact that parents would want to be involved in their students' education. And I fully open, as Karen said, open our board meetings. I would welcome them in. I want to hear their ideas, want to hear their concerns, and want to hear what their students are lacking, what they need, what we can do better, what we can provide to them. Again, our students are the future of our country. And if we don't invest in our students and we don't start getting these scores up, we're going to be in big trouble. And we have to recognize that as a country, and it starts here with us. It starts at the local level. We have to invest in our students, our staff, our administration. And from that point, it will be a better climate and culture within the schools.
Thank you, Eric. Steven Cusmano.
I would fully open up to hear more concerns about what's going on. I take an active part with all the parent-teacher conferences. I ask questions. I push the teachers to give me more information. As a school board member, I would be more than happy to hear what's going on. I agree with Karen Stokes into bringing a form. Let's ask some questions. But we always have to go back and see what the policy is. It is their right as a taxpayer and as our job as an elected official to listen to their concerns because this seat doesn't belong to me. I might got elected into it, but it belongs to Ward 6. And everybody else's seats belong to the parents of Rochester, the taxpayers, and the students. We need to push harder. We need to know what we need to do, and we need to hold the superintendent accountable.
Thank you, Steven. Kelly Allen?
I would absolutely encourage them to get more involved. I know at our school, we have open houses and we have Core Four nights that invite the parents and the families to the school to show them different things that we're teaching. Well, not we, but the teachers are teaching. They have other nights, I can't think of the names of them, but it shows the families what they're teaching. I would encourage them to be part of a PTO, to do more ideas and to, like, I thought of doing like a game night of like an escape room where kids can go to different classes and solve puzzles and just come up with new ideas and just be more involved and be active in their children's.
Thank you, Kelly. Matt Bowyer?
So I guess I'll start this off with everyday math. We heard a lot from the community, and this is not new, that that math curriculum, as a parent, that I sat down with my daughter trying to figure this out, and math is kind of my job, it just didn't make sense to myself. We did a survey, in part of the district, the survey that went into the Five Years Strategic Planning Committee, that we looked at. One of the topics was our math curriculum. The community spoke to us. It aligned with the district was already looking at with the contract coming up and it was time to look for a new curriculum. And they found K through 5, a new math program that will help out this year. And the next step is looking at 6 to 8. Now, we have a great, solid plan that our teachers do, where they look at two programs and look at, does it make sense to make a match to K to 5? Or look at to the high school? That is where we hear from the community, we hear from the students, and we talk to the teachers to find out what is the best option. Because after all, they're the professionals.
Thank you, Matt. Tabitha Davis?
This is a very good question. First, absolutely, we need more involvement from the parents. But the thing is, the board that we have now, parents have spoken up and the board does nothing. As somebody who goes to almost every board meeting and speaks up, everything that I talk about, about the issues that our district is having, that our parents are having, our staff members are having, even the children that are having, it's not getting talked about. They just brush it under. So with that, it's someone who's running for at large, like, I represent the entire city of Rochester. I did go to the community meeting last week with them talking about the IEPs, stuff like that. And they were talking about a new math program that's going to be coming up, and I believe next year. We've gone to three...
Thank you, Tabitha. Colleen Yeznchak?
Yes, thank you. Great question. So I'm going to try to take this in two parts and obviously do that quickly. The first piece to this that stands out is the part of the question where it says, "How are you going to respond to parents' concerns?" And that means that there's active communication happening back and forth. And that is thing number one in terms of my campaign objectives, is that I want to find more ways, better ways to communicate back and forth with parents, with guardians, with the community. And I would say the second part to this is that if I were a parent in the school district today, I would be asking questions about what is or is not being taught. Because with 70% of our students not proficient in reading and writing, and even worse, in math and science, we need to be asking questions about what is and is not happening and how to support our staff with doing even better.
Much better.
I'm trying at different octaves.
Go a little deeper.
Deeper next, okay. Thank you, Colleen. Shane Downs?
Yes.
So I enjoy hearing from the public. I had a phone call last night from a concerned parent. And first thing, I listen, I take everything in. Then I ask them if they've talked to the administrator of the school. And I want to make sure that we give our administrators the opportunity to address any kind of concerns that they may have. Because sometimes they can handle it at that level. But I always end that conversation with, "Reach back out to me if you still do not like the answers." And then I have no problem calling the superintendent, emailing superintendent, asking for a better explanation on what's going on. But it's important that they're heard. And I agree with Mrs. Stokes about inviting them to the instruction meeting and letting them speak to us without being on a timer and letting us respond back. Because during public comment, we can't. Invite them there and let us have a dialogue.
Thank you, Shane. Ann Grassi?
It's a similar answer to the what the current board members have said. Instruction committee is where we discuss curriculum and what our needs are for our classrooms and for our staff. And we hear from staff at those meetings. It would be nice to hear from parents who have some ideas about what is good. I've got one in my pocket. Thank you. It's allergies. I'm going to run and get a drink. So I'm going to give up my last 28 seconds.
Okay. I think Amy's actually going to, she's going to grab a beverage for you.
Good for you, Amy.
We'll give you a moment. Paul Cormier, thank you, Ann.
Well, for one, when my three kids went through the school system, I went to every open house for every kid all the way to senior year. They hated me for it. But, and even a kid that lived with me for two years, his junior and senior year, I went to his open house. He hated me for that, too. But he also has told me now, he appreciates me doing that because now the teachers knew, listen, if they start acting up, all they had to do was make a phone call and that was it. So I certainly agree with Karen as far as, if you want to come, as parents, you should come, and we should be able to talk back and forth. I know public right now, you get five minutes and that's it, we can't answer. If we do it maybe once a month, or even whatever, once every couple months, have a back and forth, at least then we'll know what parents are thinking or seeing or whatever. Maybe we can correct what is not right or what's wrong from there.
Thank you, Paul. Jim Connor?
I, as a parent, I was very involved. And if they are asking what's being taught, what's not being taught, that tells me that they are involved. And that also tells me that they are not being listened to. So the board really needs to listen to the parents because, like I said, if they're asking questions and they're not being listened to because they keep asking the same questions, they're not being listened to by most of the school board, we'll say.
Thank you, Jim. And I know we had to cut your time a little short. Did you want a few more seconds or do you want to move on to the next question?
Go on to the next question.
Okay, okay. All right.
I don't think I can do any better right now.
Well, thank you all for your responses. For question number five, we're going to return to a question asked by one of our Spalding High School students, Gavin. If you're ready, come on up and introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Gavin Boudreau. I'm a member of the Spalding debate team here in Rochester. Diverse political climate has leached its way into the school system. What steps would you take to promote diversity, inclusion, and equity in our schools, addressing issues of bias and discrimination? Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin. For this question, we will begin with Ward 5 CP candidate Eric White. And going around the room clockwise, you'll have 60 seconds to respond. Eric White?
So most people aren't going to like my answer to this question. I don't think DEI has any place in the schools, period. If you really do your homework on the topic and really understand what it is, it is a Marxist agenda. I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you, Eric. Steven Cusmano.
I'm going to have to pass. I really don't know exactly how I'd answer this into the question. I don't think we need to bring it into the school.
Okay. Thank you, Steven. Kelly Allen?
I agree. I don't think it needs to be particularly brought in or taught or, I just think, no, I agree.
Thank you, Kelly. Matt Bowyer?
Everything that we teach in our schools must be politically neutral. Both sides of the equation can be explained, but we're not to swathe one way or the other. Programs like this do not have a place in our education system. A lot of those topics are at graduate level, and that's where the maturity and the understanding comes into play. Our teachers do a great job now, and I'd support them keeping with that neutral agenda so students can evolve in their own beliefs and where they want to go. And that's how we treat all aspects in education, and that's where I would stand with that.
Thank you, Matt. Tabitha Davis?
I'm going, I agree with everybody. They shouldn't be in our schools at all. But what I will say is, the kids now, compared to when we went to school, they are very opening. They're opening to different people. They're opening to all kinds of changing. I've always taught my children that if it does not bother you, if it does not affect your life, it should not bother you, period. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Tabitha. Colleen Yeznchak?
Okay, this might be an unpopular opinion, given how everybody else has answered up to this point. And I'm not talking specifically about DEI. But what I do want to address is, we have a moral obligation to ensure that our students and our staff are not experiencing discrimination of any means, and that there is not a bias. And there's so much implicit bias, right? It is an unconscious bias that every single human being has. And I think it's critically important that our staff understand how to take a look at those implicit biases. And I think it's also important that in the work that we're doing to bring forth anti-bullying, we have to be paying attention to whether or not that bullying is in any way based on forms of discrimination or bias.
Thank you, Colleen. Shane Downs?
I honestly don't know how I feel about addressing this in our schools. It's training I get yearly, it's required for my certification, but to be in our schools, it's, yeah, I think some of it goes right down to that bullying because we know bullying in our schools is a big problem, especially at the middle school level. I think at the middle school level is the hardest three years of our being in school. Everyone's trying to figure out where they're going. But to have this taught in our schools, I think it's something they would have to dig into a little more and get a little more research from it and see if it's really, would be important if our students are ready for something like this.
Thank you, Shane. Ann Grassi?
Yeah, I think this goes to the appropriateness of a developmental age of learning, what's appropriate at different ages to teach. And a lot of these topics are after high school. The training comes after high school. I don't think I would want to see our young, developing human beings given information that would be very confusing at their stage of life.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Paul Cormier?
And I agree. I don't think it belongs in school. As far as I'm concerned, you do you. Like she said, if it doesn't hurt you, what do you care? Let them be who they are, what they want to do, but teachers don't need to be involved in that. I don't think it belongs in.
Thank you, Paul. Jim Connor?
I agree. There's no need, there's no room for it in the schools whatsoever. If it doesn't pertain to you, don't worry about it.
Thank you, Jim. Karen Stokes?
I completely disagree. They're not asking a question about teaching. They're asking what steps you would take to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. When you have 92% of your Rochester citizens are white, 92% of students are white, I looked it up earlier, don't ask me why, but I'm glad I did. How do you tell a student that's sitting there and saying that they are either somebody that's being discriminated against or having bias against? How do you sit there and say, "It's not our issue"? I would tell my kids, as I have in the past, if you see somebody that's being discriminated against or picked on, you better not be the one sitting in the sidelines doing nothing. You better be standing up and defending that person. And we as a community and as school board members and as staff and as members of society need to stand up to that. And if it's education, great. If it's telling somebody that they need to be held accountable, as Shane Downs has brought it before, then that's what we need to do. But to not do anything means that we're going to allow that to continue, and nobody deserves that. Sorry, my minute's up.
Thank you, Karen. And thank you all for your responses. Thank you again to Spalding High School student Gavin Boudreau for asking your question. Question number six will be a close-ended, one-worded, one-word response question. The topic is on the negative impacts of technology. Smartphones have been said to have detrimental effects on the learning of students. Would you propose making schools within our district phone-free zones? As this is a close-ended question, we're only looking for a response of yes, no, or undecided. We'll start with Ward 6 CP candidate Steven Cusmano, going clockwise. Steven?
I have mixed feelings on this. It might be a yes/no, but it's not a yes/no. My child should have the ability to have his phone, but he shouldn't have the ability to have his phone and goof off in class. If it's causing a destruction in the class, the teacher has all rights to take it away.
Thank you. Kelly Allen?
Undecided.
Thank you, Kelly. Matt Bowyer?
Yes.
Thank you, Matt. Tabitha Davis?
I'm not going to say yes, no, or undecided. I'm totally going to agree with Steve.
Okay. Colleen Yeznchak?
I'm going to say no, and I'm going to tell you to come find out why I said no.
Okay, yes, because yes, thank you. We have sent out the ability for candidates to elaborate on their responses, and we will post that to Life in the Lilac City.org as well as the Rochester Listens pages. Shane Downs?
I just don't like how it's phrased, like, "schools within our district." Like, are we allowed to have our phones, like, maybe in our locker? Or no phones on the premises of the, so the word, it's phrased. So I'm going to have to say no because kids need their phones for safety reasons.
Thank you, Shane. Ann Grassi?
No.
Thank you, Ann. Paul Cormier?
I agree with Shane, it's very open-ended, but the way it's worded, I'd have to say no.
Thank you, Paul. Jim Connor?
No.
Thank you, Jim. Karen Stokes?
I know it's a yes or no, but I just want to say that there's times when phones are good, but during academics, it's not. So I would say no, only during certain times.
Thank you, Karen. And Eric White?
I would agree with Karen as well. I'm going to go with no. But there's more reasons to the no.
Thank you all for your responses. For question number seven, we are going back to one of our Spalding High School students. While they're getting ready, I'll provide the setup for the question. According to the New Hampshire Department of Education, Rochester is in the top 25% for in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and incidents of violence, much higher than the state's averages. Ty.
Thank you, Ty Wyman for Spalding High School, and this is my question. Given the numerous unaddressed concerns of students such as sexual assault and harassment, bullying, and lack of mental health counseling, how would you ensure the safety, including the mental, physical, and emotional safety of all students?
Thank you, Ty. For this question, we will begin with Ward six, seat E candidate Kelly Allen, going clockwise around the room. Kelly, you'll have 60 seconds to respond, as will everyone. Kelly Allen.
I think if we have the correct staffing and the help that our teachers need, and we try and get more parent involvement and have consequences to actions, I think that might help with the problems and just make sure that consequences are being followed through.
Thank you, Kelly. Matt Bullier.
So, with bullying or any type of assault, there's investigation process. Rochester Police Department can be involved, obviously it needs to be involved, but we also have administration for the level, especially with bullying and the JIC policy.
We're never going to fix bullying if we don't stop doing something as adults in this community and that stop bullying each other on Facebook. We have to be examples, and that's what the school board needs to be. An example to our students, to how you act, how you debate, and how you learn. Until we do that, this is never going to be fixed.
Thank you, Matt. Tabitha Davis.
There's a lot in this question. The mental health, there's different types of mental health. So, we need to figure out what they are. We need to figure out how we can help them. The safety in our schools, yeah, we could have a little bit more safety. We do have police officers only in middle school and high school. I don't see any in the elementary. Middle school is very, very tough, very tough. I worked in the district. The bullying policy, 100% needs to change. I won't go into details, but there was an incident with my child, and it wasn't done the correct way. And I know others have felt the same way. And we need to see the flaws in the policy, and it needs to be changed.
Thank you, Tabitha. Colleen Yeznchuk.
Yes, thank you. So, a couple of things. One is, I know it was pointed out earlier this evening that the board put forward a good number of positions, which unfortunately haven't been able to be filled, but when they are, that should support and help with this. In the meantime, though, I think our staff needs more support. And I think they could benefit from support, obviously from all directions, but I think what they need also would be support in terms of some professional development to help them be better prepared for handling some of these situations that they're dealing with. I think in terms of policy, a policy is only as good as its implementation and how it's followed through. And I think it's really important that we not only look into how well that policy is going, but we have to track the data, and we have to follow up on that data. And we've got to address school culture. You got it.
Good one.
Thank you, Colleen. Shane Downs.
I'll start off accountability. We need to start holding these students accountable. We've got to start thinking about the kids that are in the classroom that are there to learn, that are being disrupted due to some of this, some of the actions that are going on in the school. Whether, if it's a mental health issue, then we need to address that appropriately. If it's not a mental health issue and it's just a kid or a student that just doesn't want to learn and he's taken away from the other students, we need to address that, and they need to be held accountable. And it starts at home, making sure that parents know what's going on and inconvenience them, unfortunately. When it comes to the safety, it goes along with the same, same set of lines with the kids. We know they're out of control at times, and they feel that they know they can control the school right now. And it's unfortunate for the educators because the educators have their hands full, and one of the toughest jobs they could have is dealing with this right now.
Thank you, Shane. Ann Grassi.
Yeah, the, the safety of our buildings is utmost on our building committees, dockets usually, and we're doing a lot to make the buildings safe. Mental, physical, and emotional safety, I think training is one of the key aspects of this, and I don't mean training just for our teachers, training for all the staff in the district, and training for our students. I think we talk all around them, and they're the ones that are experiencing whatever the mental, physical, or emotional safety is. Behavior is a form of communication, and some behavior can be attributed to a disability, and other behavior is a lack of being able to voice what the problem is. So, you have to look into behaviors as a chance to, to figure out what is going on. But I do think training in all, all people that deal with our schools is probably a first good place to start.
Thank you, Ann. Paul Cormier.
Well, I think the, definitely you need to get the police involved when it becomes physical or sex abuse. I mean, that's a no-brainer. That, that has to be the police record. And if a kid starts acting up, I think definitely accountability, and you need to talk to the parents. And if the parents don't want, he's got to be, whoever the person is, needs to be held accountable. And it all starts, I think, with the parents. And if there's a mental issue, then obviously we have to work in those means as far as that goes.
Thank you, Paul. Jim Connor.
I agree with everyone. Accountability has to be there, police involvement. Actions have consequences, and if somebody does something wrong, they need to be held accountable for their actions. Get the parents involved, police, whoever, whoever it may be, you know, got to make them feel uncomfortable. And as mental health-wise, that's a different issue, but still, we should look at it, and they're trying to get more help for the students now. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Jim. Karen Stokes.
I have a whole page, so I'm going to go really fast. So, we have kids that are causing a safety concern, right? And then they're in a classroom, and they're now affecting the education of other kids. So, I agree with everybody that everybody said, hold them accountable, do all that, right? But there's some students that just don't want to be in a class because they have some mental health issues, like anxiety, or they just can't handle being in the classroom, right? What do you do? That's crazy. We have a remote option. We did it when we were COVID. We do it when we have school days. Why does a student have to get an education in a classroom that is over, like, overpopulated right now? Why don't we give them a remote option? That way, the kids that are causing a behavior issue or having a safety issue are not affecting those kids that are in the classroom, and those kids that have anxiety are able to get an education with our staff while being at home if the parents are okay with it. I also want to say that we also ensure that there's a safety issue in there, but let's not forget special ed students, because that's all about me. They need to make sure that they have the right supports, one-on-one, behavior plan, all that, because you can't hold a child responsible if they have a manifestation of their disability. But lastly, I want to make sure that we also include the students to be able to provide that information and help us.
Good job.
Thank you. Wow. That was a lot.
Now you can breathe.
Thank you, Karen. Eric White.
All right. So, there is behavior matrix within school as well. Administrators, teachers, they need to feel empowered and supported to be able to enforce the behavior matrix. If they don't feel that they're supported from above, whether that's teachers being supported by administrators, administrators being supported by the superintendent, and then if parents just come in and complain that their student got in trouble for whatever the behavior was, and there's no accountability for the, the student, that in turn impacts the learning ability of the other students that are in the classroom. So, there has to be accountability, both for the student that's creating the problem, as well as the teachers, administrators, and above, to make sure that they're actually enforcing the policy and feel supported in enforcing those policies.
Thank you, Eric. Steven Kusamano.
When it comes to security, I agree with partnership with the local police department, also new technology. There's a lot out there. I also agree that our policies need to be changed, reviewed, and actually enforced. Going back a couple of years, my son was bullied. I reached out to Karen Stokes and Shane Downs. Both their hands were tied, but they did what they could. Went to the superintendent. Superintendent told me he was responsible for the safety of my child. Well, needless to say, it didn't stop. And I do agree with Karen Stokes. When we asked for a remote option a year after COVID ended, we were told, no, that's not an option. So, he was removed from the classroom. So, it's time to go back and hold accountability, and it starts from the top. He didn't secure the safety of my child, and you know what? He needs to be held accountable. And we need to do, find other options. If we do need to have a child outside of the classroom because of any other reason, a remote option is there. It's already in place, and we already have the technology there.
Thank you, Steven. And thank you, Ty, for that question. I'm looking at the time here. I would like to ask one last question if, I want to be respectful of everybody's time, though. Okay. All right. So, we are actually going to, because this question was actually referred to as one of the most important questions asked in the first session. Stacy, we're going to go to question number 10, and Ty, once again, we're going to have you ask. I will provide the setup as you're getting ready. So, a recent study conducted by Reaching Higher New Hampshire surveyed nearly 600 teachers, paraprofessionals, and administrators about their jobs and what factors might prompt them to leave. Nearly four out of 10 responded the climate of the school was a concern. About one-third cited a perceived lack of administrative support. One-fourth of respondents pointed to low pay, with 100% of par educators referencing low salary as the top reason for leaving. Ty, please ask your question.
Thank you. And Ty Wyman for Spalding High School. My question is this. High-quality teachers and staff are instrumental in fostering young students' educational experiences. However, due to low pay, many teachers stay at Rochester for short periods of time before moving on to higher-paying districts nearby. What strategies do you have for recruiting and retaining high-quality teachers and staff?
Thank you, Ty. And we will start with at-large seat candidate Matt Bullier. 60 seconds to respond, going around clockwise. Matt Bullier.
By far, the most important question we have here. And I know we work with the unions, and we have our contracts and rotation for that. That teacher, the years two to six, that's the most critical years that we want to keep them in-house. That's when they look at other districts that potentially are making, being paid a little bit more. We have to look within. Is our culture supporting them? Do we have benefits besides the same benefits structure you get with any district? Do we have the benefits where they have the ability to work with students, expand upon their education through different programs and pathways? I had a conversation with somebody running for Congress this past weekend, and we're talking about school psychologists, for example, who are all part of this, these contracts. And I said, you know, we need to be competitive in our wages. Not that we're not going to pay the wages, but it would be nice to have that gap so we can compete against the other mental health facilities, so we can attract the right talent in here. Not looking for the full bill to be paid, but what can we get from the federal government to help us in there? So, it's looking for creative ways to solve these problems.
Thank you, Matt. Tabitha Davis.
I'm so excited we got this question. I've had staff members in the district message me personally. They were leaving the district because of the lack of communication from the leadership, the lack of the acceptance of their, their job. They're not getting appreciated in what they're doing, especially the paras in our district. We have had so many paras leave our district. So, how can we fix it? We need a new leadership, and we need a new board. That's where we start. And that's how we can get the best for our children, the best for the staff, is a new leadership and a new board. Look at their contract. Yes, they just did a new contract. And tell you the truth, I've seen it, it's not the best. We need to redo it. We need to ask the staff members what they want. That's being transparency.
Thank you, Tabitha. Colleen Yeznchuk.
Yes, thank you. So, I believe we need to start with understanding the cause of these shortages. And yes, it's true that across this country, we are facing teacher shortages and educational staff shortages. But we've already established that we're not the bottom of the barrel in terms of pay. We're not the top, but we're somewhere in between. So, I don't necessarily completely believe that pay is the issue. I think it has a lot to do with the climate and the culture that exists currently within our district. Like Tabitha, I've had people approach me. I mentioned during my public comments recently at a full school board meeting that I believe exit interviews play a key role in this. I've had two people who've left that approached me and said they didn't have an exit interview. I've had one tell me that she felt completely unsafe in her job, but when she approached it, she was told, your safety is not my concern. We have got to make sure that we're creating a space where they want to be.
Thank you, Colleen. Shane Downs.
Exit interviews. We need to know why people are leaving. We asked the superintendent, and he rarely gives us some answer that doesn't make sense. I know myself, Karen, Sandy, we have stressed about hearing the exit interview, being part of the exit interviews, but the current board does not support that. We need to know why people are leaving, because you get into this job not for the money. You do this job because you love teaching, you love being in education. And you need, we need to know why they're leaving, because they're not leaving for a huge pay increase. They're leaving for other reasons that we don't know. We can guess, we, we can assume, we've all heard, but we need to start having exit interviews. I would like to have them have exit interviews with the board so we know why people, people are leaving, so the board can start fixing the issues.
Thank you, Shane. Ann Grassi.
Part of the problem is the funding system in the state of New Hampshire. Your child's education shouldn't be based on their ZIP code, how much the community can afford to spend on your child, which is what the state of New Hampshire does now. We're in competition with places like Portsmouth and Dover and Concord that can afford to pay their teachers more because their tax base is bigger. It is a funding issue, and I believe that we need to become more educated on that issue and collaborate with our city council and our state reps in getting better funding system for the state of New Hampshire. It shouldn't make a difference that you live in Alton, whose tax rate is really low because they have that wonderful lake up there, or Rochester that has no, we have a very low ability to tax in this town based on our assessments.
Thank you, Ann. Paul Cormier.
I don't think salaries the issue, as someone, as they brought up. They said that we're kind of in the middle for salaries. I think a lot of, as, as all three of my kids and the other kid I had live with me, I went to all the open houses, and I used to say, hey, thanks for teaching and thanks for, and there was more than one teacher that said, why are you thanking? I mean, they were stunned that I would actually say thank you. And, I mean, even simple things like that can go a long way. I mean, yes, salaries obviously matter because everybody wants to eat, but, I mean, I think if you just feel appreciated, a lot of these, just, just make them feel appreciated, and a lot of them will stay. One of my kids, third-grade teacher, she taught all three of my kids, and she said she's waiting for my grandkid, but that's going to be a waste. She said she's leaving the, because she couldn't handle the, the stress among everybody here, basically. She couldn't handle it, so she left for another school. So, I think that's a problem.
Thank you, Paul. Jim Connor.
Yeah, like everyone's, oh, most everyone here is saying it, I don't think it's a salary issue. I do think it's a work environment issue. I don't think people have their backs, I mean, higher up. The board tries to. Few people do. Some don't, you know? And it seems like the superintendent definitely doesn't have their back. So, that's why I think they're leaving. And we probably should be supporting our teachers that teach here. We really should be, because like I said, when my boys were younger, it was great. Teachers were all right, and you know, parent-teacher conferences, everything was good. And everything has changed since back then till now. We need to go back to where, the way it used to be.
Thank you, Jim. Karen Stokes.
So, our teachers are amazing, and they don't want to leave. And we've actually been heard from, we've actually heard from quite a few teachers that have said it was a really hard decision to leave. So, I guess my, I guess my thing is I'm going to ask you guys a question, right? Because the high school students, I believe, asked this question. How many high school students go to a restaurant or to a retail store and see your teacher working a second job? Door-dashing, or, you know what I mean, like, working in a restaurant, right? Now, let me ask you the next question. How many of your principals or admins do you see working in those same positions?[1762.26] you see working in those same positions? Now, we know that they're not leaving because of the money, but let's be honest, they deserve more money. So while we can sit here and say it's the state's responsibility, and we're not getting enough funding, or, you know, the question is, what strategies do we have? Well, we need to figure that out, because our teachers are not only providing items for the classrooms, they're working second jobs, and then grading at home. How fair is that?
Thank you, Karen. Eric White.
I could speak for a long time on this, Ty, and I appreciate, again, the question. What I would say is, our teachers have to feel supported. And if you build a climate and culture where the teachers feel supported, they're not going to want to leave. That starts within the building, but that, the, the administration within the building has to feel supported to build a climate and culture within their building, so their teachers and their staff enjoy coming to work every day. If they come to work every day, and they don't have the tools that they need, they don't feel supported to be able to supply for the students, to provide for the students, to pour into the students on a daily basis, it's a very taxing job. And our teachers within this district and across the country are amazing people that work their tails off all day long and when they go home at night, like Karen said, with the grading. So, again, I live with one, so I can kind of speak to it, but they work their tails off, so.
Thank you, Eric. Stephen Cusamano.
I've had boys go to school in California. I've had them go to school in Virginia, and I've had them go to school here. I've never met a teacher that says they need more money, but they do. Also, I've, but I've heard from them, they need more training, or the opportunities to go get that training. They need more tools in the classroom. I agree with Eric. A good climate, culture, everybody wants that. Safety in the schools. Also agree with a lot of the board members that say, open communication with the staff and exit interviews. If they are leaving, we need to know why. What tools didn't we provide them? Is it a better benefits package? Maybe it's not more money, it's more retirement, it's better medical insurance. Those are all things that we can meet, and we can get into the middle of. It's not all, everything's not all about money. And like I said, between California, Virginia, and here, and five boys in the school, I've never met a teacher that said, "I need more money." They just need more support or more help.
Thank you, Stephen. Kelly Allen.
I think if we support the good teachers that we have, and then it would twinkle down to finding new ones. I've spoken to several throughout the district, and they've said, you know, they only get two days to set up their classroom, and that's been troublesome. They would like to have kindergarten screening mandatory to help them get ready for the new kids that come in, so they're not, you know, having children in diapers, or nonverbal, or issues like that. We could build up our PTOs again, I know I've said that a couple of times, to help fund projects throughout the school that the teachers are paying for. Just take care of the teachers that we have now, and then that would twinkle down word of mouth and find new ones.
Thank you, Kelly. And I believe we started with Matt. So I want to thank you all very much for your responses. Thank you, Gavin and Ty, for your questions. At this point, we are now going to conclude the 2023 Rochester School Board Candidates Forum hosted by Rochester Listens. I want to extend a thank you to all the candidates who participated this evening. You're all here tonight. It's very clear by the responses, because you want better futures for our community, for our schools. So we appreciate you being out here tonight. Additionally, I would like to, once again, thank the city of Rochester for the use of the city chambers, our volunteers with Rochester Listens, the community members who submitted the, these questions, Spalding High School students who composed questions and came here tonight to ask them. And lastly, the Rochester Government Channel, who in addition to providing the live coverage tonight, will be uploading this forum to their website for viewing. I'm going to conclude by quoting Susan B. Anthony, who once said, "Someone struggled for your right to vote, use it. Please make sure you use that right and vote on Tuesday, November 7th." Thank you all, and have a great night.